Greetings everyone in here in the house Jayman Jack with Port City Uncensored. We've got producer Scotty with me in the studio and joining us is Bill Smith. And give me one second here. Running a little bit behind but gonna make sure to get this shared out to everybody there on Facebook. Alright, so yeah before we start kickoff, this will be the second week in a row that we have another homicide to report. Not only that, this is the second one this year that happened on a block where I used to live. This was on Oak Hill Street which is off of West Eighth Street, the other side of the freeway. And yeah, they found a thirty-five-year-old dude shot. Again, a block that I used to live on, so the second time this year. So yeah, it looks like we're back up to a homicide a week. So anyway, that being said, we should have a few other people joining us later on. But we're gonna start off, our mayor Christina Fugazi was in DC, is in DC this week. Stumping for Stockton, wanting to bring shipbuilding here. The Trump administration wants to renew shipbuilding in the country. USA only builds about 1% of its ships and yeah, we could probably do a lot better. And a lot of people feel Stockton would be ideal for that. So let's take a look at this little video clip here and then we'll have a little bit to say.
Right there, the Capitol. I wish I could show you the White House because actually we're having meetings in the White House as well. We're ready to go. Some people have said, oh, this is gonna take years, but we're talking about a year. We have the acreage, we have the docks, we have access to the freeways, to rail. I mean, we're just a prime location. We can't rule out the politics. We definitely need to make sure though that we are really selling them on the location, that we have the workforce, that we have the space available. So if we had an opportunity for a face-to-face, man, I'm bringing my A-game. And they're gonna wanna come out to Stockton, they're gonna wanna visit our area because I'm gonna sell it.
I got no sound, I can't hear anybody.
Okay, how about now?
Good.
All right, great, sorry about that. Yeah, you're a man experienced with boats, so what's your thoughts on this?
Building ships in Stockton? Gonna have to go through a lot of change. You know, if you want, you just look at the pictures of Mare Island, where they build ships. And we don't have any dry docks, we don't have any wheres. There's a lot that has to go into building a ship.
Let me pull up that slide. Okay, this is the dry dock of Mare Island.
Dry dock in Mare Island. That's another, that's three, four hundred feet long. They open up the lock and you can pull a ship in there and then you pump the water out. And then you can surf on the ship. And then fill the ship there. Stockton doesn't have anything like this. And I'm not sure what type of engineering they're gonna put forward to build dry docks or where they're gonna build dry docks. You know, because it's a big operation. In my lifetime, I worked at Norfolk Naval Shipyard back in the day.
Uh huh.
And it's a huge operation, it's a huge operation.
Right.
You know, need a giant machine shops, you know, you need all the steel. You know, I'm not saying it can't be done and I'm not being critical, I'm just saying it's a long ways off for Stockton.
Could it be done in a year?
No.
Okay, realistically, what would you say, two, three years, five years?
If you got after it aggressively, maybe five years, you know?
Really?
Yeah.
Wow. Okay, hmm, any thoughts Scotty on building ships here?
Yeah, Bill, I had a question actually. So let's say hypothetically you had like ten million dollars and you're like say in charge of city council. Let's say you're the mayor hypothetically and you have this opportunity to bring shipbuilding to Stockton. How would you do it? So you said like it would take time, right? But like, what if it was like a small, like maybe instead of like ten ports, there was one port? How exactly can we bring shipbuilding and make it something in Stockton that makes a profit for us? Because like Stockton was originally owned for agriculture if I remember correctly, but well, that didn't work out too well. So how about shipbuilding, right, considering the Delta River?
Well, Colbergs, Colbergs used to build captains launches, okay? Colbergs Yard, called it. And they built smaller boats right next to the stream. And they had ways there, so the ways is like a railroad track that runs down into the water. What you do is you put a little track on them and the boat on that little cradle and it runs up and down the track. And that's how you build a boat or a ship to launch in a year in Stockton. And that's probably what we've ever done in here. You know, Colbergs has sent it down. The ways for Stevens Marine is still there. But almost anything that you build on this side of the I-5 bridge is not gonna fit underneath the bridge if it's got any size stuff. There's a lot of things to take into consideration. Rough and Red Island was not, was not, it was a communication base for shipbuilding. You know, my great-grandfather worked at the Port of Stockton. There was a barrel plant at the Port of Stockton where they'd manufacture barrels and, and you know, for fuel and oil and stuff like that. You know, that was, that was one of the big things that Stockton did back in the day. To answer your question Scott, I'm not sure that that would be money well spent. That's just my opinion. There's a lot of other things that Stockton can do, it would generate revenue, so.
So but as far as actual shipbuilding, that's, that's gonna, that's gonna take a while. That's more a long-term project.
Yeah, oh yeah, if, I mean, if you wanna take it on, you're gonna turn the whole Stockton, you know, Port of Stockton and, and the neighboring neighborhood, turn it into an industrial area that is geared towards, you know, heavy manufacturing, heavy steel and, you know.
Right.
You know, if, you know, even if, if you take a minute and, and Google Norfolk Shipyard or, or Groton, Groton Subbates or, or even Mare Island, like the slip that you showed. Those are all heavy industrial shipbuilding area. Stockton's just a different, it's more of a, more of a port for offloading, you know, goods and sending out. I don't know, the mayor's got to see where it goes.
Alright, yeah, apparently she's pitching the idea in DC and eventually they would have to come out here to Stockton, look things over and, you know, make decisions on their end also. So, you know, I mean, it sounds like a great idea, anything that would create jobs of course, you know, is worth looking at. But yeah, I agree, building a ship is not a small task and it is a lot of, it is definitively heavy industry. So I think, yeah, we can agree on that. And so, yeah, maybe there's some more, more thought that needs to go into this. So yeah, we'll see where this goes and but other than that, I do wish the mayor luck. So moving on this week, we had a big cleanup out there on Trinity Parkway, the homeless encampment that has been there for a while. And yeah, there's a lot of mixed opinions about this. I'm gonna pull up this little slideshow here. These are some pictures that were, well, these are screenshots from a video that was taken three years ago and this is directly inside the camp, so let's take a look at this. Yeah, so anyway, yeah, shopping carts galore, people actually living there, complete with the beware of dogs and no parking signs and, you know, everything else. And yeah, again, I filmed the video there three years ago, so it's taken that long. And of course, those people were camping down there long before that. So, yeah, this was a situation that was allowed to fester, you know, for a good long while. And I can tell you the people that we ran into down there were, they weren't Rhodes Scholars, they weren't archbishops or elder statesmen, they were not nice folks. And so now when they did the cleanup this week, apparently they said the majority of them did accept help as far as shelter, resources, services, etc. Eighty percent, it sounds a little high to me, I'd like to see some documentation on that. But either way, that would, let's say that's true, that was still twenty percent of them that refused services. And so where did they go? Rumor has it that the, the area by Lower Sac and Thornton was where some of them headed. There's creeks that, you know, there that they're hanging out at. And so that's probably where that twenty percent went to. And of course now, you know, those neighborhoods nearby and those businesses nearby, we'll have to keep an eye out. So, so anyway, again, people are saying that we don't really have any place to put people. People on the south side are saying, well, we need cleanups done here because, you know, Mormon slough is a mess and, and everything else. So, oh, and then of course, they're saying that they're not gonna be allowed to come back. Well, my feeling is unless they've got the budget to have armed guards there full-time or the police or sheriffs are gonna make an appointment to go out there at least twice every day, park their car and go out and physically walk that area, I think they'll be back. That's just my opinion. Bill, what do you think witnessing this cleanup there?
I know a lot of people that are involved with that cleanup. Jessica Velez with Red Rabbit is, is kind of in the middle of it. And the sad part about it is, okay, now, I can understand people wanting to move them out of there, they've been in there for so long. But the city should have had a plan in place. The county should be helping the city put a plan in place. They're not, they're not, you know, they're not trying to do anything to facilitate to move them. So, you know, so if you go in, it's like going in and knocking down an anthill. The ants are gonna scatter, but they're gonna eventually gonna come back to the anthill. So, you know, the city's received a lot of money to deal with homeless problems. The county's received a lot of money to deal with homeless problems. I put forth myself, you know, the ground rules for, for community first village project and lots of things that they can do, but they don't seem to be the least bit in doing anything. You know, they may be, they're doing, you know, little Band-Aids, I can't say that they're not doing anything. What they could do is community first village plan. They could do that on a piece of property and do away with sixty, seventy percent of their homeless here in Stockton. But they refuse to, so, you know, it's, it's a no-win situation. And it costs the taxpayer lots of money. That little fire drill that they had out there the other day, I'd hate to think what the price tag was on that. A lot of, a lot of resources thrown at that thing, so. That's my opinion.
Right, joining us on screen here is Shu Lo. Hey Shu, can you hear us?
Yes, yes, I can hear you guys, how are you guys, hi?
Alright, so yeah, what's your opinion on the homeless cleanup on Trinity Parkway this week?
You know, I think it's a really good idea to clean up some of the homeless issues, but you know, it's more than just, you know, going out there and putting on a show, right, to clean up homelessness. You know, city's gotta do a better job at, at really finding alternatives, living situations for homeless, right? So, you know, I know that they're building some kind of like apartment complex or something, but that only held like close to ninety homeless.
Mm-hmm, and we got a few thousand.
Yeah, we got a few thousand, literally almost three to four thousand now. And, you know, we're spending like all these millions of dollars for these, you know, ninety, ninety people. Why haven't they looked at, you know, other options that are probably, you know, I know that when I was running for mayor, there was options like down in the San Bernardino but the Santa Barbara area where they actually brought in all the homeless individuals and they kinda, I'm gonna say kinda put them through a, oh my God, I forget what the term is, you know, like sorting or filtration system where they were actually identifying what their needs were, right? So if an individual needed like, you know, healthcare or mental health issues, then they would direct them to that particular, right? And if individuals were, for example, lost a job, right, and needed alternative kind of re-education or revocation or training on vocational skills, so that way they could go back into the workforce, right? That's what we really need, instead of just, you know, putting on a show, oh yeah, we're gonna collect millions of dollars from the taxpayers and then just go out and clean homeless, you know? I mean, that looks good from a city standpoint where we're actually cleaning up the city, but we need to go further than just going out and cleaning up parks and stuff. Because what happens if you clean up Victory Park, what do they do? They go to another location, right? And it becomes another solution for somewhere else. So all we're doing is we're just kinda putting a Band-Aid on, but really not a Band-Aid. You're pushing it from one location to another location and that's not the real solution to, you know, solving homeless.
Yeah, it's like musical chairs. Okay, for the people that refuse services, alright? And we all know that the shelters, you know, they're gonna have drug testing, they're gonna have curfews and all that. And, you know, no doubt that's why some of these people are gonna refuse services. Now, as a stance now, if they refuse them, well, they just let them go and wander the streets and find another place to hang out. What about the jail option? Alright, this has been talked about by a lot of people, you know, in other words, it shouldn't be okay to be a professional vagrant. The services are there, the pathway to get off the street is there. I mean, all these things are available to someone if they wanna get off the streets, available for free, alright? I mean, you know, and you're gonna refuse that? I mean, what's the thought process of somebody that's gonna refuse that? How bad do you have to hate America to turn down a deal like that? You know, what is the name of your ISIS cell? I'd like to know. What's your guys' thoughts on the jail option for those that don't wanna play ball?
Well personally, I, I think that the county and the city have dropped the ball on, on drug rehab and, and, and mental health rehab. You know, they don't take an aggressive line, you know, there used to be, you know, twenty years ago, there used to be four or five places where you could go and get drug rehab or alcohol rehab. And most of those have closed down due to the county. And if they don't have a place to go, you know, you have like New Direction over on Cherokee, you know, that's one place. Full Gospel Reformation, that's another place. Recovery House in San Joaquin County, out by the county hospital, that's three spots, okay? And on a recovery basis, the best you can do is maybe two or three percent. So if you're running a recovery house and you're running one or two percent, you gotta run hundreds and hundreds of people through these programs to get the numbers where you're making a difference. So you have to have lots more programs, you have to have, there should be thirty places for people to go here in San Joaquin County, so they can get sober and get clean and get mental health help. You know, and, and then your two percent off of that is, is you're making some headway. You know, if you're just, you got one or two places where people go and they're all filled up, you know, with people that are just laying around eating food and doing nothing, then people aren't getting recovery. And I think a lot of it has to do with drugs and mental health issues as a result of drugs.
Right, yeah, Scotty, any thoughts on, on, on the homeless issue?
I'm glad you asked. So I have a very, very unique solution, one might say, almost supervillain-ish solution. So I'll put it like this, we, we pay our taxes, we do our part for our community and whatnot. And I'm a younger guy, I guess, I'm in my twenties and I can't help but recall when I was a kid, maybe like what, ten years ago even before that, that the parks, you know, they had a couple homeless people here and there and as the years go on, more and more and more campments, more buildings getting burned down, more shit gets stolen in. It only seems that, you know, it gets worse, you know, I think there's, what's, what's the word for this? The definition of insanity is doing the same thing over and over and expecting shit to change.
Right.
Now, tell me if this doesn't sound insane, how much of our tax dollars over the last decade have gone towards trying to rehabilitate a bunch of homeless people, right? So yes, we've had some success, I'd say marginally, because, yeah, a lot of these people are homeless, they need help. Those are there not by choice and they want a way out and we give that way out to them. And now, this is where my supervillain, you know, kind of little plan comes in. So what do you do about those that you arrest when they refuse your help and then they do the time and then they come out? You're still spending tax dollars on giving them places to sit, but you know what they're gonna do when they come out? I'm just gonna go and do more drugs. So I'm thinking more of like, like Machiavelli, if you ever read his book The Prince, that's kind of my mindset is. So it's, it's like this, is that if I can't be loved, then I'd rather be feared, if you can't, if you can't be both. So the reason I say that is because you have to think of, like, think of your kids, think of all the young people you know, your family. It's hard, especially if you're a parent or you have grandkids, right? What future would you give them if you do nothing but like, I guess we just sit here and just let it, the issue get worse and worse? So my solution is, okay, so we've rehabilitated those that have wanted it, that's great, now they're not homeless anymore. We've put those ones that refused it in jail, now they're out, now they're still walking the street. So I was thinking something, something, just round them up and then just put them on a bus and dump them off far away. After all, that's what they've done to our city, Stockton, I mean, think about the surrounding cities, right? I mean, last time I checked, everyone, I'm sure I've said this before, when people think of California, does Stockton come to mind? No, you think of Los Angeles, you think of any other city but here. And I can't help but wonder, what if Stockton wasn't the armpit of California? We can make it something better, after all, it's not a humongous city, it's smaller. Now, my solution is mainly controversial because people are saying, oh, what about the rights and stuff? And well, I'm thinking you kinda lose priority as a citizen when you value a heroin needle over the well-being of yourself and the well-being of your community. And that, that, that's counting you doing it five years. So let's say, how many, how many times have we offered a helping hand and they've turned it away, year by year, by year, by year? And I'm sure if you go to any park downtown, you'll see a lot of the same people running around. So it's more like this, is that you give them, it's either this, you can take my hand and I can give you a way out or you're on the bus out and that's it, there is no going to another park. There is no going to another or digging a hole in the side of a fucking highway or some shit. It's more like a simple solution because when you add more bureaucracy, why do you say bureaucracy?
Bureaucracy?
Yeah, that and red tape, things start to get murky and it's like, it's more chains on you and making your job harder to do when the solution is simple, but nobody wants to do it because they'll be led by the bad guys. So I'm just thinking, think about your kids, my guy, do you really want them to stop on a fucking heroin needle when they go to a park or your dog? Just think about it, you know what the solution is? And how much money are you gonna waste at this when you can rather spend like a million bucks on to get a bunch of buses and drivers? And you'd be like, alright, bye-bye, you're gone. Now, it doesn't really matter where they're dropped off, the point is, is that, so I'm imagining Stockton as a fort, you know, like think about like some medieval type stuff, right? So imagine it's walled off, so you only care about the well-being of your people, right? Because they live here, they work the job, they do everything, they do the plumbing, they have the police officers, the workers, yada yada. Everyone who has a part to play does it and they do it well and they pay their tax, they have a right to be here, right? So why do, why does our city prioritize people who don't contribute to, versus the ones who do? So just think about that, how many, how much more of your paycheck do you want to go towards people being arrested, thrown back out and then just getting their fix on the cycle repeats? Just tell me, does that not sound insane? I love your opinion, gentlemen, this is just a young guy's opinion, because I've seen it since I was a kid and it's only gotten worse.
Okay, I see Shu Lo's got a big smile on his face, what do you think?
I totally agree with Scotty because you know what, I feel the same way because I grew up in a communist country.
Thank you.
You know, I grew up in, I grew up in a communist country and we didn't have homelessness, you know? If you were, you didn't do your part as a community member, right, you were shot. And that's how we have to really treat homeless. And, you know, I think what happens with America is we cater to, to the people that are kinda like lazy, don't wanna, don't really wanna do something, they just wanna live off of everybody else, right? And we give them more rights than we do. Because, because you look at a homeless guy, he could walk down the street, he could take a piss, take a dump and then nobody says anything. But for example, if you were to do the same thing, the cops would pull it over, write us a ticket and we had to go to court, we had to pay a big old fine, right? Or even spend a couple nights in jail and then we lose our job, right? So that's the consequence of being a good person. And we really have to stop catering to everybody else, you know? Because that's why I kinda like Trump's idea where all these illegals, they weren't supposed to be here in the first place. Let's get them out of here. Same thing with the homelessness, all these homeless individuals, we should really check where they came from and say, you don't even, you were not born in, you didn't, Stockton is not your hometown, where were you? Where's your hometown? You lived in maybe Nebraska somewhere for the last twenty years, right? So why did you come to Stockton? Let's send them back to Nebraska, let Nebraska deal with it, because that's their problem. What they're doing is, you know, during the early What they're doing is, you know, during the early uh Michael Tubbs era, right? They were mudding all these homeless individuals in a stockade. And I think, I think we really need to do is bust them all out again.
Yeah, I mean, it's not right for other places to be sending, you know, people here. And I I could tell you, uh, personally, I've met uh homeless people from Portland, from Seattle, from Phoenix. And yeah, uh, somebody either threw them on a bus, gave them a sack lunch, and sent them here. Uh, or 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 they 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 came here like from, like I said, Portland and Seattle. I mean, the one gal told me that, yeah, it it was a lot more fun to be homeless here. Fun, that was her words to describe it, she said the homeless guys here were better looking. I mean, and I can understand, you know, where it's the middle of winter, and you know, it's cold up there, yeah, they're gonna come down here. But you know, this is now the the mentality, the thought process of some of these people that are on the street, that it's a game, a lifestyle, I mean, I mean, come on. You know, this this is where things have gone too far. And uh personally, I feel there has to be some kind of consequences for 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 these people. Uh, you know, hey, you put them in jail, guess what? They're housed, they're fed, and you can plug them into services. Alright, but uh again, you're gonna have some hardcore people out there, you know, hardcore meth heads, uh junkies, they're not gonna want to play ball. So you know, uh, that that's always gonna be at the at the bottom of all this, because drugs, I feel, are the biggest part of it. Uh, there are people that say that uh that, oh, no, it's only a small percentage. I say bullshit, it's probably more like eighty or ninety percent, because a lot of these first responders, when they go out, the firemen, uh, the paramedics, the the police, they'll tell you, they see the needles, they see the glass pipes. Um, so uh, yeah, drugs are underpinning a lot of this. But uh, but again, uh, I I guess this is a continuing problem. Uh, we're gonna have to see where this goes. Uh, again, will we see campers returning to Trinity Parkway? I I I I'm kind of betting on the side that we will. Uh, maybe not, but uh again, unless they have some kind of plan to police that area and and to maintain it, um, they'll be back. And you saw from the pictures that I I put up, you know, uh, on the slideshow there, what it looked like inside that camp, you know? Um, it's like, you know, they'll, yeah, they will literally set up a whole whole community, you know, if left on their own, you know, building houses out of shopping carts, so um, yeah, so anyway, uh, to be continued. Um, the next thing I want to talk, uh, oh, did you want to say something, Bill?
Yeah. One of the biggest problems Stockton has is the building that sits on Washington Street between San Joaquin and California Street. That's the HSA building.
Uh huh.
Okay, so it's the county, it's the the Health and Human Services Building for the whole county.
Mm-hmm.
Okay? EBT cards, they send them out, the whole giveaway program is right there. That's why there's so many damn people here in Stockton with their hand up, wanting this or wanting free stuff. I mean, they give, they give EBB cards to kids that graduate high school.
Really?
What for? Go get a damn job.
I'm jealous.
You know?
Damn, I graduate too early.
It's it's uh, it's as long as that, as long as that building's down there and and it's giving away stuff where people don't have to get their ass in something, it's gonna be right here in Stockton. None of our cities have that building. They have smaller satellite, but not like, not like we have. That's one of the big problems.
Mm-hmm.
So that's just my opinion.
Okay, yeah.
Got something?
Uh, Scotty?
I had one, uh, final piece, Dad, uh, thank you for agreeing with me. Um, so uh, this just came to mind. I'm a big John Wick fan, and I can't help but remember there's this one recurring theme in all the movies. Uh, it's consequences, there's always this saying that uh rules, right? Rules, because without them, we were animals, right? We live among the animals. And the thing about consequences is that if, well, if you fucking break the rule and shit like, okay, so there's this hotel called the Continental, right? So it's like a hotel for like assassins. So if you try and uh try to assassinate anybody there, you're gonna get assassinated, because it's a hotel, like, that's against the rules. And thus the saying, consequences. That's where everyone's like, oh, man, I I better be on my best behavior, these guys don't fuck around, because they they don't fuck around, they don't. So my point being is that, um, I'm I'm not saying like the, to be like John Wick, it's more on the theme is that if you live, if your city has a culture of people not val- uh, if they're uh not respecting the law because there's no consequences, then what do you think you're gonna get, right?
Uh, what we got now.
If I'm a young dude who come up in Stockton, and uh and the culture is pretty much anti-everything, right? And so it's, it's like, well, then there's your answer, right? It all begins with the culture, so that's what I'm saying. If they don't, if they don't believe in consequences, well, then there's there's the root of the problem.
Right, and and part of that also is enforcement. If you're gonna have rules set up, you're gonna need the people and the mechanism to enforce that.
And enforce that without people having, um, uh, what's it called? Um, uh, red tape on a bureaucracy, a good point of this is like, uh, imagine, okay, you guys go on a ride at, right, at Walmart? I'm sure you've all noticed that there's uh the stuff you want is now locked behind glass doors, right? You know what I'm talking about? How annoying it is, I have to hit the button, you have to get somebody to come help you open up the thing, because the thing's locked behind the glass thing.
Yeah.
When I was a kid, that wasn't really a thing, you didn't have to worry about that. And now, if I remember correctly, a security guard can't do jack shit if someone steals a bunch of stuff. They're like, hey, I have to report this, but they can't physically stop it and stuff, and it it's like, if I remember correctly, in California, we we have the shittiest self-defense laws, and also for for security too. It's like, why would I be a security guard if I can't secure the fucking store, right? So then what what's the point of me doing the job? I'll be like, hey, stop, you, what am I gonna use foul language? So it's just something, thinking, how are you gonna enforce the law? Or having people who want to be enforcers, but they can't do their job properly. My case in point being is if you guys remember that, um, all cops are bad move in A-CAP, whatever it was called, like when people are like, defund the police. I'm thinking, well, then who are you gonna call when someone tries to jack into your house? You ain't gonna call Ghostbusters, so that, I leave you with that.
Right, right, uh, yeah, yeah, it's uh, it's a mess. The consequences, uh, we need enforcement for that kind of stuff, uh, you know, um, yeah, so uh, again, this is an ongoing mess, and uh, whether it gets better uh in the near future or not, uh, we shall see. But uh, you know, the thing about Stockton is, is uh, and I've told people, uh, we have three buildings, three pieces of real estate here, uh, that if you go there, when they're open, they're always busy, they're always Grand Central Station level busy usually. One of which is the Human Service Building, that Bill was just talking about, uh, the other one is the courthouse. And uh, the other one is uh Mental Health over on California Street, okay? That's a lot of people passing through all those doors fifty-two weeks out of the year, okay? And uh, these aren't out-of-towners, uh, these aren't aliens from outer space, these are our neighbors, okay? That's a huge chunk of the population, okay? And this is the raw material we have to work with as a society here. So uh, yeah, we we do need to get a better handle on how we handle these folks and uh and be prepared to enforce it. So uh, again, to be continued. Uh, the other thing I want to bring up is, and uh, this is something that was brought to my attention this week. Um, we all know about the New City Hall. The one that we've been waiting on uh for quite some time now, the one that uh keeps running up costs and uh costing money. And uh, yeah, let me, um, I'm gonna switch over here and bring up a little slideshow. And let me get back here, okay? So uh, this is uh, the New City Hall. Um, if you notice, you don't see any uh workers or people or work trucks there. And uh, according to what I've been told, that's pretty much the way it looks now. Not a whole lot in the way of being done. But uh, the the bombshell that I was told is that this building is sitting on a sinkhole. Right, uh
Wait, 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 a sinkhole, that's some Final Destination.
Uh, in in other words, yeah, we have
I'm not working there.
Structural issues with this. Now, uh, one of the things I was told is that the building is having issues with the windows, apparently leaking, and also elevator problems. And if we take a look here, um, you can see random windows have plywood on them. Uh, seems to be a lot of uh plywood and work going around with the windows, so uh
The money went to a sinkhole.
Yeah, now, um, I I I I don't know, I'm not an engineer, I don't have any official documentation on this. Uh, 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 again, this is a good food for thought and grounds for further research. Uh, and I think I'm probably gonna go by there in the next few days with a camera or two and uh check it out for myself. But um, considering that this is right next to the water, and if this building is sinking, you know, uh, yeah, no, seriously, allegedly, uh, some years ago, uh, there were some contractors out there, and this is before, I guess, the ci- city actually finalized the purchase and everything, that were doing some work out there, and they, yeah, they found some issues in in this area. And I I I don't know, what could possibly happen? Um
It sinks.
Well, uh, you're in the middle of a city council meeting, and all of a sudden, water starts rising up at your feet? Or they have to cancel a council meeting because of the high tide? I I don't, I I don't know, um. Uh, what are you guys thoughts on on the New City Hall? I I know, uh, Bill and Shua, you guys have been watching this debacle for a while, uh, with the cost overruns and everything else, uh, some thoughts on the New City Hall?
We need to fire that guy, whoever did that.
Yeah, I I I personally think it's it's kind of like the Newsom, the bridge, the freeway to nowhere, right?
Uh, you mean the high-speed rail?
The sinkhole.
Yeah, the high-speed rail, yeah, the high-speed rail to nowhere, right? It's just a big old sinkhole where we just keep putting money into it and it never gets built. So this city hall is pretty much the same thing, right? All the people that actually was part of this project, and I'm pretty sure there's, you know, civil engineers and all these structural engineers that went into it and agreed to say, hey, you know what, this is a good fit for where we're gonna build this new city hall. But if it turns out to be a sinkhole, so that means they were probably in the, I guess, the uh thing operation where they were just kind of, it's a funnel, money, kind of like a funnel, you know, laundering business where
They're in cahoots.
Laundering money, yeah, into it, right, and it never gets built. So I I really need to hold people accountable, and I, once again, that's the thing with Stockton, nobody's accountable, right? We just spend money like it's, it it just, oh, you know what, we, let's print money, right? Let's just charge these residents of Stockton, you know? Same thing with our infamous um water bill that just keeps getting a ten percent or fifteen percent raise every year. It 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 never changes, right? Nothing's ever done, you know, so same thing here, we have to start holding people accountable. If if it's a city council person, if it's the mayor, if it's the city manager, whoever thought about this idea of putting this, right? We need to put these people accountable and, you know, and do something about it. I think that's the ultimate, is, you know, why are we putting money if it's gonna sink? Why don't we just keep the current city hall? Why don't we just renovate it and make it more, you know, up to par, up to date, right?
Yeah, uh, well, um, also, um, it seems that the uh, that particular building, uh, the the uh, the former owners uh were political supporters of Michael Tubbs.
Yes, they were.
Yeah, and I think that probably has a lot to do with why, why we're in a situation that we're in now with it.
They probably dumped it and said, eeh-haw, we made money, the city's not gonna do their due diligence. And then we get stuck with a pile of crap.
Yep.
Just like the In-Shape building with the county, the same thing. Cost overruns, cost overruns, cost overruns with no oversight, you know, there's, you know, I I I'm, I'm really pushing to get the counties to to put together oversight committees for construction projects. And let some people that have been working in the construction industry volunteer their time to be oversight committee.
Mm-hmm, that sounds like a good idea.
That's where your construction projects get run off the rails, you know? The city hall project is run off the rails. The the In-Shape building for District Attorney's Office of the county is run off the rails. You know, it's at eighty million dollars right now, there's not a building in downtown Stockton worth eighty million dollars.
Wow, for eighty million dollars, I mean, we could probably build like several cities already.
And it's not
Yeah.
It's not even close to being done, so it's really a, city halls, the city hall problem is not the same. You know, what was the lady's name that sold it to Michael Tubbs, Bartlett, Bartlett?
Uh, Butterfield.
Butterfield, that's it.
Yeah.
So, yeah, they're all the way to the bank, why not?
Uh, 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 so the city bought a lemon?
Yeah, and they, and somebody knew that it was. Somebody knew that it was a lemon when they bought it.
Yeah.
That part about it is, and I, and I, I hate to say this, but, you know, Kevin Lincoln stood there with his hands in his pockets for four years and made no noise about it, so.
So Kevin's part of the problem too, that's why.
Yes.
Yeah, um, so, is, is, okay, so, so, I mean, yeah, what what do we, what do we do now? I mean, i- i- it seems like uh, maybe we need an inde- some independent construction people or engineers to come in and and give an honest, you know, op- opinion of the things that that are wrong there. I mean, if this thing is si- sitting on a sinkhole, if it is sinking, uh
It's probably not on a sinkhole, it's just that the, it's just that the earth underneath it, you know, the the tide comes in and goes out, and it, you know, it's like the In-Shape building, it has, it has two basements, it has a subterranean basement that has a a pump that's constantly running to keep the water out of the the subterranean basement. And the water table, it it it, over at uh Six South El Dorado, is at fourteen feet. What do you think it is on the city hall building? Ten? Maybe less, you know?
Yeah.
You know, the building's floating, that's all there is to it, it's, you know, it's, it's, it just floats, you know? So
Hmm, um
That's why, you know, you get these, you get the, you get the earth movement, you know, because number one, the soil here in Stockton is so expansive, you know, because it's clay.
Mm-hmm.
When clay's wet, it takes on one characteristic. When clay's dry, it's like a brick. So that's why the engineering that went into building homes in Brookside came up with post-hitching cables, so those houses, their foundations float when when the, when the water table's high, and then when it's low, it settles, they have a grid of this uh, this inside the concrete. And that's just the way that Stockton is, you know? If people don't take that in, you know, it's, it's, it's sad stuff, it bears, you know?
Alright, well, uh, again, one more thing that uh we'll have to see uh where this goes. But yeah, I'm probably gonna go uh, go check that place out here uh this week, and uh maybe I'll have a little update for us on the next show. Uh, but uh, speaking of city hall, um, I wanted to discuss for for a moment the uh, uh, for lack of a better word, the current drama that's that's been going on. Um, this administration started off, I thought, on a on a good footing. Um, things seem to be moving in a good direction. Now, all of a sudden, everybody's fighting with each other. We got all kinds of accusations about Brown, Brown Act violations. This guy's pointing fingers at this one, the other guy's pointing fingers. Uh, we've got uh a split between Jason Lee and and the mayor. This guy's pointing fingers at this one, the other guy's pointing fingers, uh, we've got, uh, a split between Jason Lee and, and the mayor. Uh, we got issues with Jason Lee and Councilmember, uh, Philip Pudra, okay? Who, uh, has come up with, uh, his own little, uh, list of accusations. Uh, this is a guy who's been doing nothing but taking L's losses since he, since he started. But of course, uh, next year, we have the, uh, the elections, uh, there's gonna be some, uh, people wanting to get re-elected. And so people are gonna be trying to make, uh, you know, their moves now and stuff. I understand that. But, uh, we've got all this infighting now going on wi- with the city council. Now, um. I, I believe that one of the things that can kill an administration faster than anything around here is drama. If you remember Michael Tubbs administration, uh, I, I was at most of those council meetings and, uh, you know what? You never knew what was gonna happen at, at a meeting. You never knew, uh. Who was gonna throw the next chair across the room? You never knew who was gonna be up on, uh, uh, on the podium, you know, going off. And, you know, they had to adjourn meetings and call recess, uh, a few times because there was so much, uh, disorder. Lot of drama, and of course, yeah, well, we, we saw what happened to him. Uh, when Kevin Lincoln came in, things kinda quieted down again, but, but now, once again, it seems the drama meter is all the way over in the red again. So, um, your guys' thoughts on the, uh, on the drama in city hall and, uh, is this, you know? Uh, we, we, how, how is this gonna affect us?
I think we need to all get in the same room with one, with boxing gloves on and.
Yeah?
Try and take each other's inventory and, uh, be critical of each other's being, just lock them up in a room with boxing gloves and let them go at it. Get it out of their.
We should.
Yeah, or maybe drop them into a big giant barrel.
There you go.
You know, they could, they could duke it out, but, uh. Yeah, you know, i- i- it's sad to see because, uh, when the drama is going on, the real work probably ain't.
That's right.
You, you know, uh, so, uh, I, 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 I don't, I don't know, um. Do, do you think our mayor is, uh, is losing control or can she, you know, get us back together? Any thoughts? Shua?
I, I, I think it's, the real reason is, you know, lack of leadership, right? So as a mayor, right? You're responsible to make sure that you're leading, taking the charge and really leading your board or your council, right? To make sure that, you know, it's on task, right? They should be more focused on what the city needs are other than their own personal needs. And I think that's where a lot of time, some of these city council members, right, they're more focused on, you know, themselves. You know, prior to getting elected, it's like, hey, you know what? I'm gonna, I'm gonna do this, I'm gonna do that for, for you as resident, right? But when you start sitting in that chair, you kinda lose focus of what you're really elected for now. And, and that's where, where it really falls, right? People don't have the heart to really do the things that they promised people. And that's where, you know, we tend to see a lot of, you know, reasons why this city is so, I wanna say, you know, it's. More of a hellhole, right? And, and, and it is, you know? It, it, it's because, you know, it, it's all about, you know, what can I do for the next four years until I, I could get myself move up to be like the next. State Assembly, the next, you know, state congressman, right? That's, that's all their focus is. So, it's not about what we can do now for the city council to really improve your district and really make an impact on Stockton. And leave some kinda legacy behind, right? So we're, we're lacking true leadership at the city councils. And, you know, as a, as a city mayor, it's your responsibility, but, you know, we've seen that where, you know. I don't have anything against our current mayor, but, you know, we seen her when she was city council. You know, we seen her when she was a vice principal for the Edison High School, right? Where, you know, kids were fighting and stuff and i- if she didn't do anything, so this is pretty much it. She, that's her attitude is. You know, she doesn't really care much. It's all about Christina Fagazi. I'm gonna be, you know, Christina Fagazi for the next four years now and. I'm, I'm the mayor. I don't, I don't care about what anybody else says, right? And it's not about what their focus is on the city. It's all about, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm the mayor and I'm gonna go out and I'm gonna do the same thing like Michael Tubbs. I'm gonna see how much, you know, how much donors I can get out there to boost my, my next four years for, you know, running for another, another seat somewhere else, right? Even if I lose this seat. So, it, it's the same thing with Kevin Lincoln, you know, he was mayor for Stockton, he didn't do anything. And then, you know, right when reelection was gonna come, it's like, hey, you know, somebody says, hey, you should run for congress, right? Now it's, it's, okay, you know, let me leave this behind now. I'm gonna run for congress because somebody told me I, I could run for congress now, right? And I'm gonna get all these big donors and they're gonna donate all this money to me. I'm gonna run for congress, even though I didn't do anything for the city of Stockton. You know, I got this big head where I can become the next congressman. And then what am I gonna do when I'm a congressman? Oh, nothing. I'm just another puppet where people just kinda play me. They tell me what direction to go, where to sit, how to do stuff, right? Anybody that votes for this guy, it's pretty much, you know. You know, uh, same kinda scenario again. You're putting yourself into where we're gonna create another mess on top of another mess, right? We really start getting a clean house, literally. All these individuals that. If they go in for four years, they didn't do what they said they were gonna do for the city, let's vote them out. Let's get some new blood in there, those seats, right? And really, I, I, you know, we really need to start marching on city hall and demand, what are you guys gonna do for us, right? Stop playing with this drama where you're infighting with each other and focus on what the city needs. We need less tax, we need more police on the street, we need to get all these, you know, homeless off the streets, right? Focus on the thing that's really important for Stockton. And, you know, we're lacking true leadership, and I think that's where it is, it's the leadership. Because we have people that never had that ability to really lead, leading. It's kinda like the blind leading the blind. You got the blind guy who voted for, to become the mayor, who's really blind, who can't even tie their own shoes. So it's like, how are you gonna tell me to tie my shoes when you can't even see your own shoes to tie with in the first place, so?
Hmm, right.
Well, one thing that I got to say is the constituents here in Stockton are lazy. No, and I, I'm serious because, you know, we forget, okay? Just because they're elected officials doesn't mean that they're something special. They work for us, okay? They are employees, okay? Respect has to be earned, okay? The constituents here in Stockton need to pull their heads out of their ass and pay attention and, and, and let these elected officials know. That they work for us. Our voice is the most important one in the room. I quit being so passive, so, that's all.
Um.
Oh, I, I got something, I got something.
Oh, yeah, Scotty?
Oh, here comes, boys, here comes the young man's perspective. Oh, boy. Okay, I know, I know this isn't Fox forty, but I'm about to go off. In the twenty-something years I've been alive, all these mayors suck ass, I mean. I'm just being real, okay, so. As far as I can remember, um, I can't really think, um, if any mayor who's had a notable impact on, on Stockton like, um, like. It, it, you, you guys have been alive a lot longer than I have, so what I'm thinking is, what if Stockton had a mayor who's like a mini Trump? Not, not, not like, like, not like, okay, kinda like that, but someone who's about.
Go for sure again.
Yeah. Someone who's, uh, someone who's all about, well, pretty much who's about taking care of their, their city's main interest in only that. And who's kinda ruthless in that regard. I think, um, uh, how, how do you say his name? Shaw, Shua?
Shua.
I think Shua had a very good point when he's saying that, hey, you're a vice principal and you didn't do anything, you just watched all these kids fight. And I'm thinking, isn't what she's, well, I mean, I don't know, man, it's kinda like, uh. You, you can't do the same, uh, tactics in high school when you're mayor and you can't just stand idly by, well. You know, uh, your city kinda runs into the ground and, and I was thinking, one way to build more cohesion, more community is to. Give everyone who lives here a reason to be happy to live here, like, I don't know, what's, what are unique things in Stockton? That people do that are only unique to Stockton, like, you know how some cities have events and like festivals that are only exist in Stockton? Like, I think Lodi has the Crepe Festival or something, like, Lodi has all these cool events. I'm thinking, man, what if Stockton was as successful, if not more, than Lodi? And I'm thinking, man, would it be better than Lodi? Like, like, just think about it, hypothetically, I, um. Stockton's much bigger than Lodi, if I remember correctly, based on the map. So what if we can have much more success, like, on that level? And so people can be like, hey, you know what? I'm actually proud being from Stockton because we have a leader who cares about us and the well-interest of our people. And I feel like I'm not a dumbass because I know where my tax dollars are going. Do you guys know where your tax money's going? I mean, just, just think about it, right? Like, imagine if we could.
Yeah, a new city hall.
Oh, yeah, okay, well, we know, we know it went down, it went into a sinkhole, but I, that's a good point you brought up. What if the people could all come together, the people of the population of Stockton, it's like, okay, here's a vote. We wanna build a new city hall or a new building or whatnot, instead of us, you know, contractors and engineers and, you know, something, something, money laundering, something, 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 uh. Breaking bad, whatever. What if the people decided where the building was, right? I mean, after all, it's your tax money going into it, right? I mean, don't you think you have a say? I mean, hey, uh, were these roads where I live are, are really bad, I'd hate to get into a car accident. How about our tax dollars go to fixing the road, about fixing the things in Stockton, instead of going elsewhere in other people's pockets, right? Cause it's, it's like this, if a city is a ship like, like the Titanic. Why exactly would I trust someone who's steering the ship, uh, into an iceberg? Just so they can, like, get money out? Like, just think about that, cause I think Shua brought up another great point. Is that a lot of the mayors in Stockton's past have been like, okay, I'm the mayor and I'm just gonna use my mayor title to, like, as a stepping stone. So I can run for a higher office in government, like, I'm gonna go to Sacramento and, and be the mayor there or some other higher political position. At that point, you're not really using Stockton, uh, that is what, that's exactly the point, you're using Stockton as a stepping point, as a stepping stool. Instead of treating it like a job, cause if you're born here, don't you think, you mean, you're, you're a little entitled to giving a shit about your people? I mean, after all, it's not like most of our families here, I mean. Uh, Stockton could be like the trench Chicago level, so I think we're, we're kinda getting there, but it can be avoided. So the question I ask you fine gentlemen, cause I'm, I'm, I'm a younger guy, so I don't really have the full picture. Is mainly, how can we make it so, it's nineteen, it's nineteen eighties Ronald Reagan's, everyone's patriotic and proud to be American? How do we get that spirit back in Stock? How do you bring that back so people can be like, I love my neighbor instead of, I don't know who the fuck my neighbor is, you know? Because it's like, I'm sure a lot of you guys have that same thing where it's like, uh, what community do we have if you don't really know your community?
Right, right, well, that, that's a good point, uh. Yeah.
I, I, I got one thing I wanna say.
Go ahead.
I was born in Danmer Hall in nineteen ninety-nine. I've been here, remember Stockton? Downtown, Christmas time, it was like the most beautiful place you'd ever think you could be. It's like New York City. And Stockton, downtown Stockton, something special, it really was. And another thing Stockton used to do that kinda was the signature of Stockton. We used to have hydro races on McLeod Lake, okay?
Hmm.
And what would happen, father and sons, you know, you buy these hydro kits and you put, you build them and you put them together. And, you know, you make sure they worked and you cover them with fat and, you know, they would build these little hydro boats, you know, not very long. You know, eight, nine foot long and we would have hydro, you know, there would, it was a big deal. You know, people would come from all over the county to, to, to participate in the hydro races. Okay, so now we got a waterfront that most of the time is locked off because of Weber Point. If it's not being used for an event, it's not accessible to the public. And, you know, we got, we got all the water down there. Why don't we have Grand Stakes put up down there and have hydro races, you know? It, it, you would bring people in from all over, all over the world would be in there. Pull, pull, pull up on, on YouTube, pull up. Uh, hydro races in Japan. It's huge. It's a huge deal. You bring that to Stockton and start getting, 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 uh, those little hydro races down there, you're gonna bring out a whole new perspective of what happened. Because this is a delta city. The waterway runs right into the middle of our city. Quit treating it like it's a plague. That's my opinion.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Uh, I agree that, you know, they, they could be doing a lot more down there along the waterfront, uh. You, you mentioned the hy- the, uh, the hydro races, uh. Uh, I, I can remember when I was living down in San Diego, uh, in, uh, Mission Bay, that they would have the boat races. You, you know, like, like the big Sirius boats, you know, the, the Tide and the Budweiser, you know, all the sponsored boats and everything. And yeah, you could, you know, take a couple of beach chairs and, and just sit down there in the grass and, and just watch the stuff all afternoon and it was great. You know, and yeah, why aren't we doing stuff like that here? You know, that, that's something that would, that would actually give your city a good look. That's a good look, you know? Um, so, all right, well, you know, a, a lot of interesting ideas around here, but, uh. A- 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 as far as our city council and everything, um, I was, I was giving my take on it to somebody this week, um. It, it, I, I, I would compare what's going on in the city council right now, uh, like to NASCAR. If you had, say, seven cars, you know, we got a mayor and, and, and the council people, that's seven, seven people. Uh, if you had seven cars in a grand prix race, but half of them are going in reverse, backwards. And the rest, they have a hole in the floorboard because they pedaling with their feet like Fred Flintstone, all right? That seems, that seems to be what we have, or like, I, you mentioned, uh, Scotty, the Titanic, you know, before. Uh, rearranging deck chairs on a Titanic.
Instead of watching out for the iceberg.
Yeah, you know, uh, you, while, you know, yeah, while the ship is sinking, so. That, that's just kinda my take on what's going on right now, um, I, I, I would, I would say to the, uh, ladies and gentlemen in city hall, uh. Uh, 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 come on, you know, uh, get back to business, all right? You know, knock off the kid's stuff. Uh, how about this? Maybe they need to put a sign in city hall in the council chambers, uh, check your ego before entering. That's just my take. I see a lot of ego, uh. Not just on the council, but, but behind the clowns that are, that are pulling strings behind the scenes, all right? The dirt sheet operators, all right? You know, uh, the punk who lost four elections and was named in a grand jury report. Yeah, who, who's the puppet master that, yeah, right, okay, so ego, ego, ego. I see a lot of that and you know what? It's a bunch of shit. And I, and I'm tired of it and, okay, that's my two cents, so. Anyway, that being said, guys, uh, we're getting, uh, close to, uh, close time here. I wanna make, uh, an announcement. Let me get back to the slideshow here and pull this up. And, um. We have our assembly, uh, representative for this district, Rody Zieransum, she's gonna be doing an open house here. And this is gonna be on August fourteenth and it's gonna be out there in Quail Lakes. And I would strongly recommend that, uh, anybody who has any issues with the, like, the state. Any, any state-related issues, you know, stuff with Sacramento, show up to this. Show up to this and, uh, let this lady know what you think, okay? Hey, that's your representative, she needs to hear it. So, uh, yeah, I wanted to, uh, just drop that. And of course, uh, last but not least, uh, this week, I wanna give a, uh, rest in peace, uh, we lost Ozzy Osbourne. Hulk Hogan, Chuck Mangione, um, this was not a good week for some of our cultural heroes, um. Some childhood heroes, uh, for a lot of us and, uh. Well, yeah, a lot of these folks are in their seventies and eighties now, so, uh, you know, we're probably gonna be seeing a lot of memorials, but, uh. Yeah, it was kind of a heavy week for a lot of us. We lost a, we lost a lot of folks, uh, also for me personally, uh. George Quimman, the guitarist from, uh, Golden Earring, uh, the songs Radar Love and Twilight Zone, iconic. You know, rock hits from the seventies and eighties, uh. Uh, again, uh, he was also on the list, so, uh, rest in peace to all our, uh. Childhood and cultural heroes that, uh, left us this week, so, uh. Anyway, we're gonna check out here, uh, guys, do your plugs, anything you wanna, uh, plug or put over, Bill?
There's gonna be a, uh. On August first, there's gonna be a kickoff party, Jim Schumaker. Jim Shoemaker at, uh, not a ten minute winery.
Mantica Veterans Hall, right?
No, it's at a winery out in, in, uh, in, in, uh, Lodi. So, it'll be, it'll be, it'll be on my page, on, on, on Bill Smith's, uh, Facebook page, I'll, I'll, I'll post it up there.
Okay.
It's gonna be a good.
Saint George Winery.
I'm back in Jim Shoemaker's for, um.
Congress?
Congress District Nine.
Okay.
Yep, so, thanks for that.
All right, how about you, Shua? Anything you wanna promote or put over?
Uh, no, I'm just gonna reiterate what Jim, I mean, what, um, Bill mentioned about Jim Shoemaker. It's on August first at six PM at Saint George Winery in Acampo.
Acampo.
Thank you for that.
All right, okay. Scotty, any last words?
I got one.
All right.
Uh, first, thanks for coming on, boys, and, uh, second, this is a passage from my favorite book ever. I read it when I was like, maybe seven. It's called The Art of War by Sun Tzu, I'm sure you might have heard of it.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah, favorite book ever, um, so it goes like this, um, treat your soldiers as if they were your own sons and they'll follow you into the deepest valleys. And I'm like, man, uh, that hits hard, that's true, so. The reason I bring that up is pretty much, uh, I feel like, speaking as a young guy, I feel like the greatest mistake anyone can ever make is to live a fake life, when I mean by that is not being true to yourself. So all the people you have in your life that are close to you, that care about you, you know, that are, you maybe you could call them your own soldiers in your way. I'd, I'd say to hold them close because, you know, uh, like Ozzy Osbourne, like, just died, so I'm like, I, I like rock and roll, so. I guess the point being is that anybody can go at any time. And the reason I think life is fresh is because it's just that, it's like a roller coaster. You know it's gonna end sometime, but you just don't know when, so, uh, hold your, the people you love close and make the most of it, cause, uh, life's a crazy train, baby, that, that's from Ozzy, so.
Right.
Coming on, boys.
Okay, sounds good. All right, so, uh, you folks out there, uh, in internet land that's, uh, watching this now, uh, hit the like button. If you're on YouTube, hit subscribe and, uh, be notified when we go live and what we're doing and everything. And comments, suggestions, uh, ideas that you might, you know, think we should talk about. There's an email right there, jmanjack209@gmail, okay, that's where you also find me across all the platforms. Uh, let us know what you're thinking, uh, we do read them and, uh, yeah, we will de- definitely check it out. So, uh, yeah, that being said, I wanna thank, uh, Bill and Shua for coming on and Scotty. And, uh, yeah, we shall return next week. And thank you, everybody, for tuning in.